That's all right, um, welcome to the ZB meeting for September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Roll call please.
Brother Latrell.
He's absent.
Brother Olsen.
Present.
Brother Lopez and Mendez.
Present.
Brother Bowitz. Brother O'Callaghan.
Present. Did everyone had a chance?
Member Christopher.
Good. Sorry about that.
Brother Massey. Brother Baez, absent.
Good. Any comments or questions regarding last, last meeting?
Minutes?
Yeah.
I think I sent a couple of comments to.
Did they really discuss?
Yes, we did, all seven distinct.
Okay. So they, yeah, discussed it right now or?
No, I said those beforehand, it was.
Sections?
Yeah.
The drawing for columns?
Yeah.
Okay. Both of you having today? Alright. So should, should we just actually? First case, tonight's columns, let's just ban one first, right?
What, if out?
Yeah. Well.
Oh, yeah.
Are you comfortable with accepting it now? You accept it as is, or?
I, I suggested submit it to the email.
Yeah, okay, I'll send it to you. I've sent it to Sam.
So you, uh? Have you got a motion?
We'll make an amendment.
Yeah, motion to make an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's probably what we needed, correct?
Yes. Because there's sections on the proposed driveway and existing.
I'll, I'll send that if we need a second.
Uh.
Thank you. We're ready? Yes, in nine one column street, four hundred and one eighty-five Bayonne Street. To be area to establish a previous and random variance due to MTLC forty-eight S dot ten. The provision of the city of Lenoir to allow construction of a single family lawn and twenty-nine eighty slurp and fairway of land. The hour lot single family desert where ten thousand square feet is required was leaking through the front end on Bayonne Street where seventy-five feet is required and love guided the choir in your daughter and father on the side of the apartment space. The arrangement most requires so many appeals to satisfy the circumstances relating to toilet additions, shavings, hot tubs, structural, especially effects, shank structure, not completely general. Generally, the zoning district would be located in a little enforcement courtesy or involved in standard harsher arrangement for other facilities. Desireable to leave the ground. They may be.
Thank you. I think, I believe there was a list of items, attorney, uh, that we requested from last meeting, if you can just go through the items that we requested.
Yes.
We know, we've, we know this project, we've, you know, we've seen it. So if you can just present us with the findings for.
I'll be brief.
Okay.
Uh, with me is Jack Peterson, who's licensed builder, um, Chris Whitecroft, and I brought photos of a very similar home built at sixty-nine Perkins with the same issues in terms of elevation. It quickly, this passed the board of appeals more than two years ago. It lapsed, we're back with the same proposal. There were two questions, as I understood it, one related to the runoff from failure at a higher elevation down the right away to the rear of eighty-five columns. The other issue, uh, related to the, uh, entry to the, uh, garage under. So with that in mind, first, I just want to hand out the pictures I, I introduced you to these fellows. You know more about this. Sent to the board of the proposal, but they're better equipped than me to answer questions. Being licensed builders, having built homes and land and having built a home very similar to this one. We can fucking the same issues. Surface water runoff and that not in under, uh, a ground gen. So with that, uh, I hope every member saw, because I provided to prior through the meeting, uh, the summary that I was given in the plot plan with the, uh, annotation as to where, uh, the, uh, drought well would be, uh, where the walls would be. We sent everybody set a plan showing those walls being built. But to describe it in more precise terms, uh, Jack and or Chris can answer any questions you have. Uh, they were reflecting and remembering when they built this other home.
That they're the same builder for the other property? Okay.
This is Jack Peterson.
Jack, uh, I know you're a friend of the, the board, but, but can you just provide your last?
Yeah.
Uh, Jack Peterson, two-ten Broadway.
Thank you. Members, I, I know we've all received, uh, the document. The questions are yours.
One of the questions I had is the proposed driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Coming off the back of sidewalk.
Yes.
To the building, it's about a twelve-foot offset.
Yeah.
So you need to come down from that grade to get under.
Into the garage under.
Garage. So I just want to understand what that stuff is, is the garage.
Right, it's, it's like a.
Is it set right that it can do that, but also accommodate the existing driveway?
Okay, so if you're looking at the garage under that we're proposing, the right side of the sidewalk is higher than the left. So at that point, it's twenty inches to the proposed new slab of it inside the garage. In front of that garage, we're going to have a drainage trench, a trough. It's four inches by six inches deep, commercial grade, will carry all the water down the right side into a dry well in the back of the house. That'll be piped separately, then below that, at the footing height will be a perimeter drain and crush stone. While the roof leaders will go into and head to that same place. The other way would be, if the building was raised up, it'd be too high. And I don't think it would conform to the height, and that wouldn't really solve anything. You still have water that's going to run down that.
The elevation difference between the back of the sidewalk surface.
Is six feet.
And the surface of that.
Right, the, the back of the lot now.
No, at, at where the, where the garage base entrance is, what's that?
It's like twenty inches.
Twenty inches.
Yeah. I think the elevation.
Over twelve feet.
Right. So also what we do by the sidewalk, put a little burn of the paving, so any street water doesn't run up in. The sidewalk has a, like a two percent pitch on it right now, so towards the street. So that'll go down and hit the, uh, stone drain, it's like two hundred yards down. It's quite a ways away, but the steep pitch here, the water should flow there pretty good.
Yeah. Are you guys planning on putting any cars directly from the property?
No.
No.
One in the garage, and I think there's one or two out back, there's a lot of space out back. That driveway is a right away, the other building has.
Okay.
Four or five, they got a lot of parking out there.
Sure.
So that's what we're proposing.
Alright. Any other? Okay.
Okay, you're welcome.
Pretty steep though, thirteen percent.
Yeah. It is, but that, that could be raised up foot if necessary, then we'd still be under the height limit. But also that, the slab has to come up inside the garage, which means more compacted gravel in there. It's not a problem, it's an extra cost, but that would take the curse off, it would make it like a seven pitch, seven percent.
They come off of that and snow, but it's.
Yeah, well, I've seen a lot worse, but that doesn't mean that we're going to make it worse.
Yeah. And then trying to come out of it.
Hmm? I would say, you know, maybe if it's severe weather.
Make up when you come out.
Yeah. I wait to pull out of my garage or shovel, or I would go down back and park out back, it would be safe, but.
And I think it's on the drywall in the back.
Pardon me?
Uh, the, the well.
It's like four hundred gallons.
Okay.
Maybe more, because, you know, it's going to be wrapped with a fabric, so no silt will wash in. It'll be all three-quarter crushed stone.
Catch base, it's just a stone wall or?
Stone. Uh, it's not a precast, because I don't know what's in there for ledge or not. If we could get a precast in there, I'd put it in, but I can get more coverage with a drywall, with a silt barrier, than I could with a formed drywall. And those roof leaders will go into that and the garage.
And then if that comes up, it just bleeds out into.
It'll leach out into, and the perimeter drain is going to pull water in from the roof leaders, that's going to leach out, because it's all green space, there's only paving is on the left side, everything else is grass.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is anyone else here for this project that wants to speak on behalf of the petition? Anyone else? Anyone here against the project? Attorney, maybe against this project, no? Okay. Alright. Um, to, to, to me, it seems like. Uh, I would suggest maybe, um, move forward with this, with some stipulations to make sure that we'll be in stores to the neighborhood back. Somehow, everything that they're proposing here, it should be recorded as stipulation. Agree, okay. Alright, so what's the, what should we forward?
Well.
If they can put all the stipulation regarding water management.
Right, I didn't notice somebody else's stipulations, because I wasn't quite. But I would move.
Well, we, uh, it's just like, as you mentioned, I think we have a, um, perimeter drainage. Does a catch basin, that's, there'll be, um.
A trench drainage.
Trench drainage.
Trench drainage from the.
Drywall.
So you also mentioned property on the side of the property.
Uh, I wouldn't put that as stipulation.
There's a, there's a, a drywall, plus about a four hundred gallons.
Right, yeah.
Six foot diameter for trench.
Correct.
And there's a, uh, you know.
Essentially. Roof drainage, driveway drainage will build. Oh, yeah, it's all the, pretty much all the runoff for the property.
Into the, um, garage.
Alright. And you guys want to hear what that's? Alright. Is, how much more height do you have to play on that?
So like.
No, it's, uh, because. Maybe tenants.
It depends on how the building, um, has to be. Yeah, it works that, it goes from the side.
Highest measure in two hundred and eight. One is feet. Can be more than two and a half. Thirty-five feet, but you're measuring from the mean level of the grade, that's what you're struck.
That's why.
Right.
Yes. Yes.
You know where you're at. I, I, I just thinking of you.
You've got four, four or five inches, I think it's going to make your life a lot easier with that driveway.
What, what's your, what's the?
But you have to balance it.
There's two percent, two percent pitch from original street, so water that falls, it goes into the street drain.
I think they, because when they pull out of there, they're not going to see anybody on the sidewalk, they're just going to be looking at the sky.
So then to find what is running into the sidewalk. It's going to be.
No, no, not the sidewalk.
Yeah.
With the paving starts up there, no, not, just enough so you don't notice it, but water will roll off the sidewalk.
It's almost, it's almost like a trench.
What's it?
It's almost like a trench.
It's just a population.
It's a subtle burn.
Known for, uh, as against the garage, so the water doesn't flow into the garage.
So is that against the slab that they said was going to come up in the garage?
Yes.
The slab, so the garage is the slab.
Correct.
Yeah, we're putting in a trench drain, so the trench drain will be sort of away from the front door a little bit. So it'll pitch from the garage to the trench drain, like out towards the street. That's where that little burn thing would be, then everything comes down. So we don't want everything just crashing into the door.
But the, with the motion, it's going to allow. Right. Put the motion up, we're reading an I motion. So the stipulation is a perimeter trench. New drainage to the garage, minimum four, not the gallons, three foot, um, stone. A burn, subject in the garage, in a trench drain, is that right?
Garage door, uh, it's, yeah, it's right before the garage door.
The drain is going before the. The drain is in front of the garage door. Sure.
Or trench.
Great.
Let's see when it goes out, make a question. Yeah.
That's what I wanted to be.
Um, no, I guess that's, that's the sidewalk, that is a public property that's outside of the.
Alright. We give a second?
The second?
Yeah.
So, let's, uh, Mr. Chris.
Yes.
Stipulations.
Yes, with stipulation.
Uh, with all the stipulation.
Yes, with stipulation.
So Lopez and Mendez with the stipulation.
Yes, to grant with stipulations.
Yes, to grant with stipulation. Well, thank you. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, let's have a good one. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey boss, are you here from Murphy Ave? No. You're not here from Murphy Ave?
Nobody.
Murphy Ave? No. Here. What? Oh. I'll get you. You might be actually next, but. No, it's not. Next case, uh, seven, uh.
Seventy-six ones.
Seventy-six one, some issue. Some issue, that's you guys, right?
You were here in July, and two questions exactly. One was the shady car question between me and the building commission. And with the mind, surprising children, the building commission raised an issue at eighty-four million areas, which was the existing eight-foot priority on the right side of the Jay window. And that led to a question with respect to, uh, the need for variance in the driveway as well as if it's a called forty-six five meter, which was not sufficiently more determined than it. And that's the, uh, the difference from the treaty before in the commonwealth district where every other dimension, uh, requiring.
Right.
And, and this on site. But that then forwarded a suggestion, uh, which was with respect to flipping, putting the driveway on the other side, uh, and then that would make movement, the driveway on the right-hand side. And you would go and see, uh, the revised plan. Uh, I then went, of course, I'm, uh, the, uh, the very sense of respect to the, uh, need, uh, where any objection will occur to any. Then I went to spoke with Commissioner Donovan, uh, who said the only reason he had the list of laws, because it was there. And that, that, uh, began seeing, uh, that as a problem, but I explained to him to do other alternatives. He encouraged me to explore those, which was another set of issues, which is, uh, there's a telephone, an existing telephone pole on the other side, and we need to get a curb cover and have a curb cover not interfered, because it's very expensive and difficult to remove a telephone pole. And so that was the next issue. Then the biggest issue is really relates to where to put the addition. And the suggestion from the board was to press it out. To the side that we had, but to the rear. The concern that we had there, and we're working through that now, is, uh, that would be coming in on that side and entering the pockets, which is, and we don't want to bring that violation, and I don't think the addition is so large that we would, if you see in the back, yeah, this label is pretty wide. So we need to get you a set of plans and, um, uh, candidly admit that I don't think, uh, Kenny Lopez would agree with it, he did, and it was brought to my attention that he indicated that to you, and so either I thought.
Yeah.
Or I was stuck, but in any event. He's agreeable, so we just need to get a plan that reflects with, uh.
I, I, I think.
As often is the case, uh, it's like making sausage, you're not there because you had input which.
If I just may jump a little bit here, I think that was based on the commission comment about the driveway. That's the reason why we felt that if you put the house in a rear back, right? Then the whole comment from the commission goes away, right? So you're no longer using it as a, a driver, because it's no longer conforming to the dimension, dimension that we have now, right? So it might also help if you get a letter from him saying that, oh, well, the driver is the limitation, right? Then we can certainly just, we'll deal with the addition, what is, and, well, he has to decide where he wants to put the addition. And obviously, as he know, cost is now an issue, right? So if he needs to put the driveway near the, uh, the pole, he's going to have to, um, take the, the cost, right? So if, if somehow if you have the letter from ISD showing that, you know, the, the property, the driveway is no longer a factor, right? Then he can, he can make the decision where he wants his house, the addition. Yeah. It does sound fair, right? Because the only reason why we, we talked about that is because it was noted, um, oh, no, an ISD letter.
Yeah. Well, we told you to describe. You didn't have a reason.
Yeah.
But I know, I mean, he said he had to.
Okay. Mr., Mr., pull his hair, so you want to chime in here, you have, you have, we're good, okay? So that's not, we'll be honest with you, we certainly can give you another chance to, um, to guard it, right? It'll be nice to have the letter, so we can at least acknowledge it, right? That ISD does not see this as a problem, we're willing to work with you on this, right? You have to make the decision after whether you want your house in the back, the addition in the back, or the front. The costs, we, you know, that's, that's on you.
The, the other thing was the pole was.
True.
And, and the curb, if you make a network, well.
Correct.
But we'll be happy to do.
Yeah. Okay, so we're willing to, so you're asking for.
Continue. When I think the next meeting? When is it?
Eight?
Eight. Away from the one.
The one?
Yeah, up to the one.
Okay, so we're.
That's one.
Thank you.
If you can see that, I can make a motion to continue the seventy-six one, seventy-six three, seven, three, please.
I'll second, alright, thank you.
I got one more thing, so I'll talk to you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one other issue related to that.
Can you take a vote for us?
Is it before we vote or after?
It's one.
Alright.
Member, uh, Christopher?
Yes.
Member Olsen?
Yes, to continue.
Brother Lopez and Mendez?
Yes, to continue.
Brother Bowitz?
Yes, continue. You have the one.
So it's been a while since I've been dealing with something in my neighborhood, which is directly across the street from what used to be the community hospital, it used to be a greenhouse.
Yes.
And I had a long issue with that. Uh, and out of the way of all, and then, um, I was here in December of twenty twenty-two, and it was approved with several stipulations, reminding of the trial study, uh, and some other items, all of which we ultimately got, we went back and forth in various, uh, versions of what was the acceptable, and finally, on September the twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty-three, I got the decision.
Right.
And, um, so now there's just one stipulation we're dealing with, uh, which, and you've seen the practice, well, many fans, we need to bring house, offices, so I'm asking you that we could get a six-month extension from the day of that, which is coming up, September the twenty-first, so I don't lose what it's taken me several years to get. Several years to go first in the city council to get a special funding, they raised the agreements, then I went back with respect to the offices that.
Alright.
The city council and the board of the field.
So.
So I don't.
Which stipulation, which one?
Um, I think it's like number seven about the other businesses. If you decide to find, the meeting can find them, I think it's other businesses. Yeah, but the city council, the offices, the greenhouse, they don't pay too much, that is. I think we brought, certainly by the fact of starting, we brought the maintenance plan, that, that took us a while, but I certified, uh, the maintenance.
Yeah.
We brought the fact, and now I can see the other part of this is going on. It said now across the street, we are also, it's, they, they moved the model, and, um, they put it, uh, non-stable, it's the, you know, west.
Right.
And that's going to be putting the fines in. Yes, you have the financial, that's flexible term.
But, okay. Or if that means you still have to come back with us, um.
Yeah, well, it's.
You got it, to get that change.
You may not, it's just that I don't want to, uh, not afford any opportunity or means of going back.
Okay, alright. I have one issue.
Okay, so.
This is continuous, six months.
Six months.
The twenty, September sixteenth.
So we're talking about four thousand dollars, right? Yeah. So I make a motion that we need to put in project four seven one, the street for six months. Extend.
Extend.
Uh, second.
Okay. Thank you.
Could this, just become a, a whole business? Yes, it's new business, okay. Yes.
Uh, I know. It was just.
Well, yeah. Is, is this. It will have to be in business.
It's under the business.
Because we never heard it, so I think it's.
No, it was a long time.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
It's partly here, it's a rental business, that's what we mean.
Alright. We have to. Alright.
So.
Yeah.
Okay. Member Will Olsen?
Uh, yes.
For six months.
Yes, to continue.
Member Bowitz? And brother O'Callaghan?
Yes. You have a nine, nine.
I never read the text.
Yes, I'll check. But it's not a time, no, no, that's fine. Alright. Should we, um. Let's see. Oh, now we. Alright, so next case is seventy-seven Alley Street.
Yes, two, four, three, four, MTLC forty-eight, it's about ten foot, you know, which is, in result organs, to allow, for, in the white, W F one district, we park this basis, less than required. The very first requirement is that it's more appeals to specifically back to related to soil conditions, shade, which is especially affecting such a
Yeah, it's
Which are voted in, a literal enforcement, which is the order to involve state department having to
Sure, that's all. Turn your microphone, say, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh My name's Tom Demakis, I'm a lawyer with offices at fifty six Central Avenue, Illinois. Everybody knows Jerry Raffielli from Raffielli Construction. Jerry has owned the property at seventy seven Alley Street for a few years. He's had a tenant there, tenants moving out. Jerry's operation, Raffielli Construction, is currently spread over four different locations. But he could fit everything here, and that's what he wants to do. He wants to move his own company into seventy seven Alley Street. He's a contractor. It's in the waterfront one zone with contractor storage yards are not allowed. Uh so we need a use variance for a contractor's storage yard. And we need a uh
Parking.
Parking buffer variance. Uh you can see that uh this is Alley Street, this is Burnet Plumbing over here. The parking space is on Burnet Plumbing and um uh over here aren't set back five feet. And then the ordinance requires that. So uh he's got plenty of parking, but they're just not set five, back five feet. But it's kind of, in my view, irrelevant that they're not, excuse me, Jerry. Because this is, you can see from this photograph, that this is his building. And then this is the parking lot, this is Burnet Plumbing, and there's a fence right up against Burnet Plumbing, so nobody uh nobody's gonna be bothered by the fact that the parking spaces are five, are not set back five feet, you probably The other thing that's important to note, you can see from Jerry's photos, is that the whole thing is enclosed, there's a fence in front of privacy fence that goes along Alley Street. Then because of Burnet Plumbing right here, nobody can see to the yard in here. These are railway tracks back here, and this is Blossom Street, where the building blocks any view of what goes on in here. So the parking lot is private, it's part of the rest of the communities. We've been in front of the mayor's development team, uh they support this. I hope Mr. Caudell sent a letter. Uh really?
I haven't seen a letter.
Nothing? Is this, is he on vacation?
Who?
Jim Caudell.
Are you
Because I called him Friday and today to remind him to send a letter. But anyway, we went in front of the mayor's development team.
Yeah.
They're all in favor of it. We have, Councilor Hogan's in favor of it. What a bunch of deadbeats.
Jeez.
And 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 then and then we have to go to the city council to get a special permit. You know, for a contractor's yard, you need both a variance because it's in the waterfront district and a special permit from the city council. So we haven't been in front of the city council yet. Uh we're asking you to approve this and make a contingent upon getting city council a special permit.
We actually like to do the other way around. You go to them first, and then then we'll get a letter from Councilor Holden, and then get a letter from Jim.
You know, we can certainly
I would just, I could not vote for this right now because I have not been able to I think this would be very difficult for me to vote.
No, I get that. I get, you know, the other thing, Mr. Mack, or you know
Yeah.
I I kind of get that too, but I've talked to the law department and they said it doesn't matter, but if that's your preference.
That's not preference, this is kind of the practice that we've been been doing for as as much as time we've all been here.
I did it backwards, I think, when on Alley Street, I got a contractor's storage yard for the Dandriel Brothers, and I think I came here before I went to the council.
I don't think so, because I would have been a waterfront district, right?
Same place, right across the street.
I believe you must have received a letter first.
I got a letter from the development team, Caudell.
And I believe we got something from Hogan.
I, we probably did. They must have gone up in that space shop.
But it continues, if it's not a big deal, right? We can tell you it's
How about this?
Oh, oh, okay.
I know, follow.
Yeah.
I mean, it's very clean, very, I mean, one of the questions I would think would be like says, because that green fabric
But the green fabrics are all what's pre-existing.
Yeah, I would, I would be It's a matter of
This is what's existing. And if you continue, I just need to do my research. Like before, I was trying to
I'm sorry.
I understand that this green fact
Yeah.
hides
All the chunks back there.
All this.
But you can see it's already framed, so it's not
Yeah, I mean, the the fence is uh how we need uh little um yellow painting on the building that's something
Well, I don't know if he's asking, are you asking for a continuous?
Yes.
Don't make me angry, just ask the city council. Well, you need, yes, you need, right, you need the blessing. But I I don't know what you need, right? You just talk whatever they just thought, right? And then you just come back to us, and if you sound a waver
Sure.
That if you wish to
I think there's, do you have a comment?
We're gonna come back. I just um just want to understand what what's going to happen where the parking is, like that yard itself. What's the activity up there?
There's parking for vehicles, the other storage of equipment.
In this parking, in the parking slot? The night parking?
There's parking slots here, but there's storage on So there's, there's parking spots here in the in the building.
So there's no change to the building that we're in now?
Change the film, this is what is
Parking spaces, and now you're telling me that's
Storage.
So it's not
So this is the parking space.
Right, right, yeah, so you're just showing the parking Right.
Yeah.
More functional.
And then and then it's on the And then where, like, are you gonna take up a couple of those stalls for snow storage?
Right, that's what I think, that was a comment, yeah, it's like Use hall. Use hall. Okay, so you need storage, you make the storage in your your yard, where will you plan on putting the storage? So you just say it throughout the yard?
Yeah, throughout the yard.
All right. So it's basically a vehicle, vehicles and equipment, not material?
Well, vehicle, materials.
So what is the end of being used for right now?
It's a place to grease, recycling facilities.
And the use, the use variance is going to be for storage of construction material?
Correct. This was pre-existing, uh and then the second change results may totally change the area, they openly from A to B. From that corner down is all pre-existing industrial space. But when I bought the place, industrial space recently, you guys transferred it to
Waterfront. And you know that they're studying the zoning, and I'm sure you guys have heard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you talk to Aaron Clausen at all, they believe that waterfront is not the appropriate zoning for this. That some light industrial
Sure.
We just need to, we need to, once I make a motion, we can take this thing, analyzing
Well, I think we gotta go to uh I think the council, I I don't remember, I think the council was scheduled for October the eighth. After the set, Mary, what do you
Well, yeah, it's your first thing, it's down It won't be
You're not gonna make the waiting for a deal.
Six months, you You always reach out to us, right? Yeah. Yeah, is that fine? Do you want the six months, right?
Yeah. I'm putting on a TPA right now, you know?
Yeah.
So then Yeah, that's fine.
Between now and the council meeting, if those letters were created or committed to sharing them would also be great?
Yes.
We're trying to
I know, I know. They they send it directly, I don't normally see them in advance, but uh
They usually send me
Yeah, okay, I should have called you.
I'm texting already.
All right. We'll off to the next one.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
No.
Just continue.
Yeah, yeah.
TPA. Can you do any maintenance? Will you be doing any maintenance on your vehicle inside?
Yes.
So like like garage maintenance?
Okay.
Although
Sure.
So that all be inside, see?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Yeah. I'm just concerned what would be outside. Yeah. As long as that doesn't wash out into the road, I mean, that's
Yeah, oh, okay.
About ten years ago, I put a
Right, it would be like ten But the car collecting show, show cars or manufacturer cars in there, right? No? There? Okay.
It's uh trucks.
Yeah.
My trucks be parked inside.
What what are you doing in Chest, what are you doing with Chestman Street?
Commercial within us.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I saw the foundation.
Yes.
And next to it, uh towing trucks.
Yeah.
The house in the back is What about that house in the front, is that that whole house?
Are you?
I don't
No.
That whole We gave them
Yeah, yeah. Uh Peter Chris Yes, exactly. Nice to meet you, sir. Nice to meet you, sir.
It's a little chest
Yeah. Hi. Thank you. Do we have? Yes. Yes. Do we, do we Okay, motion to continue, TBA, put it into the TBA roster, file folder. Second.
Second?
Yeah. All right, sir.
All right, Olson.
Uh hi.
Hello, sir.
Where is the property in front of that alley that we voted on? We voted on the property across from it, Blossom. Was that the one that the fire department used to use as a practice or something?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
You have that thing?
Yeah, I think it's this, this is, these are the two buildings that are now there. So this is this property.
All time, it's a nice building.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
But I think that one of these buildings from somewhere around here, fire department used to use it or something.
All right, let's
Yeah, then it was transferred for redevelopment, I'm saying.
All right.
Okay.
Last case of the day.
No. No, you're
You have points. Oh, yes, yes, well, that's something about flint, right? Uh ninety four dash ninety six points.
Okay, ninety four, ninety six, fourth street, commission, we're looking at the LLC forty A S dot six, or finding equipment and addition to the apartment, it's involving five people in the street. A new front entrance take ten by six, and the Archie general wasn't in this district. MKLC forty S six, state's pre-existing, not performing structures, reduces maybe a standard or altered provided that air six, except your operation should be permitted unless there is a fine provided, period, and forty, that such can Um provisions listed below ordinance, say structure for entrance are the ninety four, in shape of the package subdivision, solve in a four foot nine inch front lot line, setback for variance request required, so going to a if I get more circumstances related in the soil conditions shape or fat, typically, such a structure would initially affect the structure but not considering planning, so industry of which is located on lower as an order for I don't want to otherwise designer that's actually lot of harm, or substantially, there are
You have a call? Are you the petition? Who is?
Yeah, I'm designer for the classes.
Yes. Your name and address, please just move back, right?
Yes, so my name is Natalia, um my puberty, no, sorry. Any last things? Do you like? Yeah, so as you mentioned, this is the next structure, um they're working for uh addition in the ground, as you can see in the they're working addition for to allow the house, and they want to abolish that time my my involved property, but now we need access to both units. So we're just to be just to allow the staircase in the access So we don't have certain limitations of the previous staircase in addition, but I can see from the mark to the ground and also in the walls, that should be about six point six by ten point six. Uh so what we're proposing is to keep the six point six, but then just remarginalize it for fifty nine to allow the new staircase. So that brings the
Okay, can you see that? I um
That should be part C or part B of the three files that we got.
So the extension in front of us on the front, right?
Yeah.
But this says you're Yeah, don't because they
But you just showed me with that, this is the
Yeah, yeah, yes.
But
Do you have a drive-in to the front, you started proposing? This exists, yeah? Yeah, it's I'm just, I will
Well, let me ask you something else, um are you doing any work in Southern? You are?
Yes. Oh, that's
The floors are just not interesting, right?
So so the depth, the width, the
Will be extended.
wider.
Exactly. That, yeah. It will go
And that's what's gonna be closest to the to the street.
That.
But if
But it don't need requirement, because they have access.
And then it gives you also addition off stairs.
Yeah. Enclosed stairs. Yeah, where you go. Enclosed, there you go in. Yeah, it's gonna be enclosed stairs, there, you get upstairs.
Oh, oh, I see.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So are you familiar with this project here? Um any comment, questions? Uh in regards to the uh the renovation that's happening inside? Okay. All right. Members, any comment, questions?
No comment.
No comment, what?
No.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else in favor?
Oh, you you want, you want me to something?
All right, well, if you want to see, yeah, if you want to see the local record, sure.
Okay. No, yeah. Okay, you. Um Solution, what?
Make a motion.
Motion, motion, make a motion, yeah. So yeah, just make it to motion. So yeah, just making two motions.
Absolutely. Okay, first, first. And.
Yeah.
Grant, no stipulation?
Yeah.
Member Christopher?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grants, alright, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, yeah. You want water? Get rid of all that, go ahead, go ahead, grab one. No, let's go back.
No, but I was upset, but without you, I'm.
Alright. Cause your neighbor can come now and say it doesn't like it, yeah, then we have to come back in, sort of the grace period. Okay, I think, uh, ordinance that was like twenty day, twenty one day, twenty day. Yes. It'll be fine, right, good luck.
Yeah. Just a little bit, because there's not a lot of space, that's the only one doing it, if you're doing that in the brands.
Whole street and.
It's.
Yeah, and there's so many other houses over there, they're all like, they're all the street.
Yeah, definitely get your back, buddy.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Eighty six fifteen Murphy's Avenue, um, so Rita, since I have a letter here, um, fifteen Murphy Avenue, eighty six, that is letter, as, as a request of taking revival, this.
Impulse, impulse.
Section forty eight, the actual findings to draw, the set application of prejudice from the consideration of the law.
Motion.
So.
Alright.
Second.
Yeah. Uh, member Christopher?
Yes.
I got Olson?
Yes.
Yes, to return.
Yes, to go on. Last motion from. Alright.
Second. Hi.
Thank you all.
Alright.